Call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda if there's no additions or changes? Counselor Cutler? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler that the agenda be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Can I have a motion to adopt the minutes if there's no corrections or mistakes? Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross that the regular meeting minutes of April 22, 2024 be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Now open the public hearing for Bylaw 1780, North Point Area Structure Plan Bylaw.
So, this is the public hearing for Bylaw 1780, the North Point Area Structure Plan. The area structure plan is, the bylaw will adopt a comprehensive land use plan, approximately 15-plus hectares of land in town, and lay out the orderly subdivision development of land within that, within the North Point area of town for residential and commercial areas and development. So, the public hearing is open for members of the public to, who are in support or opposed to this land use, or sorry, rather, this bylaw, to speak to it. We do have Jen Taylor, who is with Associated Engineering, they're the engineers who developed the area structure plan. She's gonna say a few words on the area structure plan before we turn the conversation over to the public.
Great, thanks Abe, and thanks to council for having us here. If you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, the North Point Area Structure Plan provides for medium to high-density residential development along 8th Street West, commercial development paralleling Alberta Road, and centralized neighborhood-scale park space in the, in the middle there. So, residential development is anticipated to be made up of a variety of different types of housing. It could include semi-detached dwellings, row houses, or low-rise apartments. Residents would have access to a neighborhood park space that's connected to the town's pedestrian network, and neighboring employment, as well as retail services along that highway corridor. Commercial services and along Alberta Road would take advantage of that high visibility along the highway and support the commercial needs of residents and the traveling public. The transportation network in this plan builds on the existing and planned roadways in adjacent development areas in order to link neighborhoods together. Servicing is going to consist of water, sanitary sewer, stormwater management, infrastructure, as well as shower utilities. And finally, the plan also proposes development staging or sequencing based on existing development conditions and the logical extension of infrastructure.
Does anyone in the audience want to speak to this?
All right, well, it's great to be here in person with you all tonight. The plan, I won't reiterate what's already been said, but it is in alignment with your MDP. The IDP, it was circulated to the MD of Willow Creek. They did indicate they do not have any concerns at this time, but they just want to be, keep, kept apprised of what's happening. As Township Road 130 is a road that you do share with them, it would be prudent to keep them in line if things do change. And on that note, I do want to highlight an item that is in the traffic impact assessment. One of the mitigation measures that is, that has been proposed would be that lights will be needed at Highway 2 and 59th Street in about 20 years, at 2044, depending on how development goes. Could be sooner, could be farther away, just depending on how fast things grow. With that, they also are suggesting that Township Road 130 and the access to Highway 2 from Albert, or Alberta Road be limited to right turns only, so all left-hand turning traffic onto Highway 2 is forced into that 59th Street intersection where the lights will be. So, just a safety mechanism. It won't impede anyone from accessing the highway, but it will impede which direction on the highway you could go from this side of town. So, that is something that council should keep in mind. However, given that none of the roads will actually be closed and the, the motoring public can still continue to travel along those roads, there's no concerns from my end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This that you're discussing is not to do with 52nd Avenue, right?
No.
Sorry.
Dave?
Do I need to?
Yes, please.
I just had a couple of questions. I know.
Mike, turn the mic on, please.
Otherwise, the, the watching public can't, can't hear you.
That's probably a good thing. Just had a couple of questions. I know we sometimes rely on the paper to get the information from, from meetings and things. I know the infrastructure seemed to be a big issue. Now, I don't know if that infrastructure would, if you put the infrastructure in for the commercial and, and the industrial, which is largely what the grant was for, I'm just wondering if, if that would help the residential. My personal opinion is there's better places for residential, and I certainly support the, the industrial and commercial growth. But I also had a couple of questions about some of the studies. The lady that just spoke talked about the traffic. I was wondering about the wetland study and the historical study, whether, I don't know if our engineer is still on, or whether, Abe, you know about those two studies, how they turned out, and were they necessary, or?
So, the historical study did not produce any significant results, but why don't I pass that one back over to the, to Associated, to Jen, for a fuller, better answer?
So?
Yeah, there's not much to say on the historical piece. You're right, it did not produce any results, so there wasn't, there wasn't a lot that came of that. The biophysical, it, there was a few creatures, I guess we could say, I'm not a biologist, so, that, that they identified as a potential that may be found in the area, so, just, they proposed some mitigation risks if you were to encounter any habitats upon development. So, there was no showstoppers or anything there.
Okay, well, thanks very much. I think that covers my questions.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close this public hearing. Next, I open the public hearing for Bylaw 1783, Land Use Bylaw Amendment.
Abe? So, this is a land use bylaw amendment, Bylaws, pardon me, 1783, and it's to redesignate single detached residential to multiple residential, R4, to align the land use district with the proposed development. So, public hearing has been advertised to the public in accordance with legislation, and don't have much else to add on that, other than it's open for, if our planner has any comments, or if anybody else from the public here would like to, to speak to that.
Where is this?
Adjacent to the township, or sorry, the MD's old shop.
So, this is the land that Porcupine Hills is currently looking to zone into one parcel for the development of the seniors housing fourplexes, currently with all of the lots. We need to consolidate it into one parcel so we can maximize the space on there, building 16 units per side on 52nd and 53rd.
Thank you. Does anybody want to speak to that?
Yeah, so as I said, these lands are adjacent to the MD's old shop. The zoning will allow for the comprehensive development that the lodge is considering, however, it would also allow for any other development contemplated in the R4 district to be approved with a, with a complete application. So, by allowing this redesignation, you are allowing any of the uses within the R4 district to potentially be approved. The actual development of the lodges will come down to the development permit stage.
Thank you.
So, that makes sense, like that's gonna be for seniors, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's right across the street from where I am, but?
Right.
The end building is not the same, right?
That's the next one.
Yeah, one more here.
I'm just, I'm just catching on, this looks the same.
Anybody else want to speak to this? Seeing none, I close this public hearing. We open public hearing for Bylaw 1785. Abe?
And so, this is a bylaw to redesignate a portion of land. This is back on the east side, in the area of interest for our attendee tonight, over on 52nd Avenue and 5th Street East, and the proposed redesignation is for multiple residential to retail-commercial. And again, the public hearing is open for anybody from the public to speak to this land use bylaw amendment.
So, am I correct that it was designated for daycare? Did I understand that correctly?
Dr. the Mike, if you wouldn't mind, please.
I was in the understanding that it was?
Turn your microphone on.
Is someone push the button with the little person on it?
There you go.
Okay. I was with the understanding that somebody indicated that it was going to be a daycare, and I don't know if that's accurate, what I heard, and if it is, I find that troubling because it's a quiet area where the seniors are often seen walking, and I totally agree with the seniors place across. Is there no possibility they could change that building to something for seniors, or? I don't know, but I know one person isn't gonna change the world, so I'm just here to say that I find it troubling because I bought to be away from school kids, just because I'm not well, and that was, my goal was to be not real close to. But if it has to be, I guess we'll just have to, but I feel it'll be really noisy because the kids would be outside a lot, probably, and I'm not against children, but it's, seems to be all seniors around there, and mostly, and a few young families, but there's already a little daycare behind, and that's not troubling to anyone, but this, I would gather, would be in a very large scale, and because it's such a big building. But maybe I'm wrong, I don't know, I just am hearing from others, and that's where I, and whatever I got in the mail.
Thank you.
But you guys have to go a little closer to the mic because I don't hear very well. Thank you, please.
Anyone else? Katie?
I'll just clarify, so, to help answer your question, just like with the last amendment, the, or bylaw, sorry, this would be changing the use to, or sorry, the land use district to retail-commercial. There are a large list of uses within the retail-commercial district that could be approved. Daycare is one of them. It is an application for a daycare that is the result of this land use bylaw amendment, which would allow it to get a development permit to operate. However, should things change, things like a cafe or ca, a coffee shop, a bakery, dry cleaner, fitness center, post office, liquor store, those are all uses that are also allowed in that district, so it could be one of many things ultimately. However, at this time, the intention would be that the daycare will apply for a permit once they get this land use zoning, if they do. Does that help the understanding of what's happening? Yeah. Yeah, so I'm happy to answer questions if council does have any for clarification.
Any questions for Katie?
All right.
Seeing none, I close this public hearing. Onto action items. Number one, Bylaw 1780, North Point Area Structure Plan, second and third readings.
Abe? So, second and third readings of the North Point Area Structure Plan, Bylaw 1780, or before you, council, had the public hearing. No comments received from the neighborhood circulation on this proposed bylaw, with, with the exception of a comment from the MD, as was noted during the public hearing. Just to be included in any developments for the roadworks that are on the borders of the MD, and so, of course, we'll, we'll do that.
Who would like to make the first motion for a second reading? Counselor Cutler? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to give Bylaw Number 1780 a bylaw to adopt the North Point Area Structure Plan, second reading.
All in favor? Approved. Oh, opposed, one opposed. Motion for our third and final reading. Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to give Bylaw Number 1780 a bylaw to adopt the North Point Area Structure Plan, third and final reading.
All in favor? Opposed? Number two, Bylaw 1782, Fire Protection Bylaw. Abe?
Yes, so, council previously passed first reading of the updated fire protection bylaw, and so, the bylaw is on the agenda tonight for second and third readings. If you recall, last, we talked about updating the fire charges in the, in the event of a fire, and being more, to allow the town to cover more of the costs, and so, costs of fire responses. And so, those costs were proposing to go up from $300 an hour to $450 an hour for the fire truck and the rescue van, and from $100 an hour to $175 an hour for the command truck and the transport vehicle. We also had some updates to align us with the National Fire Code, so just some wording around fireworks, and to replicate that wording about not selling fireworks in town and not storing fireworks for sale, and of course, a process for people who are looking to set off fireworks, to fill out a permit, and run that by the fire chief. There was an amended fee, or fine structure, rather, that was connecting violations of certain provisions in the bylaw with more specific fines. We used to have just blanket fines for all the provisions, so now it's easier to track a specific fine to violation of certain provisions. So, second and third reading on the agenda for tonight.
Questions? Can I have a motion for second reading, please? Counselor Kettles? Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to give Bylaw Number 178, oh, sorry, to Bylaw Number 1782, the Fire Protection Bylaw, second reading.
All in favor? Could I have a motion for a third and final reading?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to give Bylaw Number 1782, the Fire Protection Bylaw, third and final reading.
All in favor? Number three, Bylaw 1783, Land Use Bylaw Amendment, second and third reading. Abe?
Land Use Bylaw Amendment to amend property in town on the east side from single detached to R1 to multiple residential, to accommodate the desired development in the area, which is an expansion of the Porcupine Hills Lodge facility. No comments received from the circulation.
Questions? Could I have a motion to give this bylaw a second reading? Counselor Carlson? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to give Bylaw Number 1783, a land use bylaw amendment, second reading.
All in favor? Approved. Could I have a, a motion for a third and final reading? Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to give Bylaw Number 1783, a land use bylaw amendment, third and final reading.
All in favor? Approved. Number four, Bylaw 1785, Land Use Bylaw Amendment, second and third reading. Abe?
So, second and third reading of Bylaw 1785, just held the public hearing, council for this, rezoning from multiple residential to C1 retail-commercial, to align with the desired development in that area. I did have a concern during the public hearing about noise and potential, potential future usage as daycare. Think the concern right now for council is whether or not the desired use would fit in that area, and would be applicable for that area.
Could I have a motion to approve second reading, please? Questions? Concerns? Counselor Cutler? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to give Bylaw Number 1785, a land use bylaw amendment, second reading.
All in favor? Could I have a motion to, for a third and final reading?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to give Bylaw Number 1785, a land use bylaw amendment, third and final reading.
Questions or concerns? Counselor Kettles?
It wasn't that long ago that we moved this from being commercially regulated to become residential-regulated. Commercial has always been a struggle at that location, I think. I, I, I think in these times when we're looking at bringing on as much residential as we possibly can, in, in ways that would benefit the bulk of, of, of folks in Clarisoma, I, I think there's, there's opportunity that this could be that. I struggle with it coming, going back to commercial, so that's where I sit.
Pretty much where I was sitting, it's, it'll be the only little block there that is commercial, there's, there's other spots for those uses. That area is a residential area. It'd just be one weird little puzzle piece in the middle of a bunch of stuff, but other than that, I pretty much will mimic what Counselor Kettles was saying.
Moved by Counselor Meister to give Bylaw Number 1785, a land use bylaw amendment, third and final reading.
All in favor? Approved. Oh, opposed? Number five, Bylaw 1786, 2024 Property Tax Rate Bylaw, second and third reading. Abe?
Yeah, so this is second and third reading of the town's property tax rate bylaw for 2024, just trying to pull it up here. I guess, just a quick recap for council. There is a proposed 3.6% tax revenue increase above, over 2023. The residential increase is 3.7%, and the non-residential is an increase of 1%.
Questions? Seeing none, could I have a motion to pass this bylaw? Counselor Cutler? Question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to give Bylaw Number 1786, the 2024 Property Tax Rate Bylaw, second reading.
All in favor?
I'll give Bylaw 1786 its third reading.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to give Bylaw Number 1786, the 2024 Property Tax Rate Bylaw, third and final reading.
All in favor? Approved. Number six, Bylaw 1787, Land Use Bylaw Amendment, first reading. Abe?
Yeah, Katie, did you want to take this?
All right, so, this bylaw proposes to amend the definition of food processing facility major and food processing facility minor, purely to update the minimum square footage of a major facility and maximum square footage of a minor facility. The reason we are making this suggestion is an applicant has come forward looking to expand their facility, and it would take them out of that minor category. So, this was one solution, is increasing what the floor area could be. The alternative is adding food processing facility major into the highway commercial district. However, that will open your doors up to having a much larger facility that really is not what should be within your highway commercial district. It is intended for the traveling public, rather than more of the industrial-scale food processing, and so, what this will do is increase the square footage to an area that is, a lot of smaller mom-and-pop type food processors fit within, as 5,000 square feet does actually prove to be pretty limiting. I did, I did a pretty extensive research across Alberta. You're the only municipality I could find who has a differentiating, but, square footage of processing area between major and minor. Everyone else just has food processing. That being said, they likely aren't including it in their highway commercial district in most of the municipalities I looked at. So, we did feel that this would be a good solution for you. It allows your local business that's looking to expand to do so. We did consult what they are planning to do. They don't have solid plans in place yet, but we believe this 12,000 square feet would suit. suit them. But it doesn't open you up to everybody who may not be suitable in that land use district. In addition, the bylaw is also proposing adding grocery store to the land use district. We found that that was maybe a missing piece for this district with a lot of new highway commercial lands coming online between the North Point and a few other ASPs. This will provide a few additional opportunities on those lands and your local business is considering some retail. They border between just still being the, the food processing minor and being a grocery store. So if we add it in, we're not coming back later if they expand what they plan to do. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions, concerns? What if they come back to us any year and want to expand their food processing plant?
Beyond the 12,000. So, you know, that potential is always there. Based on the conversation Tara had with the applicant, we believe that they would probably be okay in the 10,000 square foot range. So we did bump it up to 1,200 just to give a little bit of a buffer. It is the food processing portion of the business and not all of the other components. So their office, I would say warehouse, the retail aspect, all don't count. So we can look at ways of discounting that, but they were talking about a 10,000 square foot addition to the building, which was not fully food processing. So we believe that this should be fine for them. However, once we start getting over that square footage, then I would suggest that they're growing beyond the means of the land use district and they really should consider a different district.
Thank you. Counselor Cars?
It's, I think we're vaguely bouncing around a specific business, but if I'm correct in the business, we had development issues and, and land issues in that area to begin with. If we are looking at North Point area structure and development beyond that, I know that doesn't fall necessarily within this, this evening. Do we see issues with services and so on within, from the town perspective to approve those expansions currently without any of the upgrades?
Because we haven't received a formal proposal, I really couldn't speak to that at the moment. However, those could be, there could be conditions of approval to mitigate any issues such as perhaps they need to treat their water on site before it goes into your wastewater system. So once we have a proposal, we would have better ideas about that.
I find it troubling to try and make a decision on this without having enough information of what the actual usage is going to be going forward.
Counselor Kettles?
I, I think all that's before us tonight, though, is, is, is changing our, our setup to be able to accommodate on, on a square footage basis. And, and I would ask council if there's any existing memory as to why we're the only municipality around that has a per square footage limitation on that. If there is any, any institutional wisdom on that, I'd be happy to hear that.
So I did speak with your former planner, Gavin Scott, and my understanding is that was an arbitrary number in order to limit the size of development that could be in your highway commercial, you know, as I had spoke to. We don't want the large scale industrial food processing, but we do want to allow your local businesses to continue to thrive. So that was how the number was chosen and just over time and observing some of the, those mom and pop type food processors that I know about in Lethbridge, I, I went through the map and I was measuring everyone out and they all fit within about the five to 10 or 12,000 square feet. Once you get over that, that's when you are seeing that industrial square footage, so.
Counselor Carlson?
Nothing of value.
So the reason we have a minor and a major is to eliminate slaughterhouses, correct?
From your highway commercial district.
Yes.
Yeah, and so it's to, to ensure that you are saving those lands for their highest and best use. And in this case, being adjacent to the highway, their, their best use is things that are going to serve your community and the motoring public. And so without naming any names, a giant french fry producer isn't going to be very helpful to the motoring public and they're better suited in your industrial park. So that's how this setup works, yeah.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Cutler?
I hope I'm not out in my field here, but if we have an existing processing place that wants to expand and put a grocery slash drive-through where you can go buy local meats and local produce or local whatever, this expansion is growing the opportunity to have something that's lacking in Clarosome, whether it be in the industrial area or on Main Street. Is that correct?
Katie?
Sorry, I wasn't sure if that question was for me. So.
Keep us looking at it.
I think that would be fair to say. That is what the applicant believes. They feel that they will be contributing very positively to the community with this addition. They do already have a retail component, they're just looking to increase it. And so the definition of food processing minor does allow for some retail. It's whether or not, depending on what they want to sell on site, then they could venture into that grocery store. And so that wasn't a request that they made, that was a suggestion that I'm making in order to prevent.
And give an opportunity if that is a land use they want to use, we don't have to come back here.
Yes, yeah, so to prevent coming back here later to do that.
Well, that just blew my mind because it wasn't what I was thinking. Now I know what it is. I, I get, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions, concerns? Could I have a motion on seventeen eighty-seven, please? Counselor Kettles? Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to give bylaw number one seven eight seven, a land use bylaw amendment, first reading.
All in favor? Oh, number seven. Bill twenty, Abe.
So this is a correspondence from Municipal Affairs. This is their fact sheet on Bill twenty, or summary sheet on Bill twenty, which proposes amendments to the Local Authorities' Election Act, which is the framework for conducting elections, municipal elections and school divisions, et cetera. Also proposing changes to the MGA, establishing rules governing the conduct of local elected officials once on council, as well as the overall administration operation of municipal authorities in Alberta. So this is the information provided by the province. We are going to have a little bit more of a conversation on this, on the next item. But it's anything anybody wanted to bring up right now, by all means?
Questions, concerns?
So many concerns. So many concerns.
But I mean, we voiced all those concerns as they asked our opinions and they went ahead and made the decision without those concerns anyhow, so.
When did they ask?
We've had opportunities to.
Yeah, I know.
But nobody asked, though.
Well, there was a survey.
There were surveys.
For the provincial power for the parties, but should we talk about it on this one or should we wait for the next one?
No, next one. Abe, correspondent, Alberta municipalities, Bill twenty, Abe.
Yeah, so this is a correspondence from Alberta municipalities who have been advocating on behalf of urban municipalities in the province in response to Bill twenty. This is a pretty lengthy, I actually have a separate, separate package printed up to, because it's so lengthy. They have been, Alberta municipalities has been holding engagement sessions. They had a, a meeting last week, an online meeting, and to discuss the changes. There are significant concerns with Bill twenty from Alberta municipalities and urban municipalities throughout the province. There are some positives, there are some items that local municipalities are supporting. I thought maybe we could turn it over to council to talk about any particular items of, of concern with Bill twenty.
Counselor Meister?
I think one of the biggest things with, that causes concern is they want to put political parties in the municipal level to increase voters turning out for elections. But I think once you make the elections invalid and your vote doesn't count when you can just remove a councillor for any reason, I think that's going to cause less people to care about voting or think that their vote matters. One concern.
Thank you. Counselor Kettles?
I, I think we're all tempted to say if they want to run this, just hand them the keys and go, but I, I, I think we have to always remember that we are, as municipalities, we are creatures of the provincial government. So they have a lot of these powers already. I don't like how they've restated them. I don't like their consultation process. I, I think it's, you know, there's, there's large piles of it in here. But at, at the end of the day, this is all things that they are fully able to do and whether they like our opinion or not.
Counselor Cutler?
I've read it, I've tried to understand it. I appreciate your comment, Counselor Meister, I appreciate your comment, Counselor Kettles. But I do believe that if we bring part of political parties into the municipal government, it's going to change a lot more than what you think they, if we have to stand by and, and, and run under a party, there's going to be a lot less, like it says in here, focus on the municipalities and more on the provincial, right? So I, I get what you're saying, there is a lot of that stuff that they already have control over, but one of the biggest things I look at is that, again, and then bringing in the financial aspect of, of being able to, to have that, it just, it just takes away from what I, as a candidate, ran for municipal government and stayed away from provincial stuff because we're here for the people, not, you know, and that's, and that's going to take a lot.
The people of Clarosome?
The people of Clarosome.
Not the people of?
One of the people of Clarosome. But yeah, I mean, like you say, there's bits and pieces that are in there, it's, it's, but again, I filled out my survey twice and, you know, they, they took the information. This was hard off the press right after the election anyhow, and so we knew it was an agenda from the get-go. But I'm more than willing to sign my name to anything that Alberta municipalities wants us to support, so.
Counselor Carlson?
So I, like Counselor Cutler, have read and read and tried to make sense of something that was pre-planned and predetermined, in my opinion. And I ever so gratefully thank any of our provincial representation that has stood up for municipalities in, in this. I just can't think of anyone that has, at least from our government in power at this time. That said, looking at the forming of voter lists, the challenges administratively from a community that it brings on, we can, we can be concerned about potential outside forces coming in, coming in to help with our community management. However, in communities 5,000 or less, we've got the ability to talk to just about everyone, right? We see them on the street, we're not full-time politicians. We're pretty much here as pseudo-volunteers to help get crap done. This, in my opinion, creates in the next number of years, towns under 5,000 to potentially be hamlets of the province. And without people actually voicing their opinions for their communities, to support their communities, you do have potential, no matter which government's in charge, to fully affect how your community is run, how they're funded, how your taxation flows through and what you get for your dollars. So I've got growing concerns daily with our provincial government and how they're mismanaging us, but this is something that we need to speak loudly on.
I agree.
Abe? So yeah, so Alberta munis has, they did conduct a poll during the webinar that they held last week. Seventy-six percent of respondents proposed that are, were support, in support of Alberta munis advocating to rescind, that the province rescind Bill twenty. So there are some requests from Alberta munis in this package. Talk to the MLA, write a letter to the premier and Minister Mackayver, pass a motion in council. There are some talking points in the attachments. Talk with local media and talk with residents. So there is a, there is a motion there and some talking points for a letter if council would like us to proceed.
Counselor Carlson?
One other point on that that I'd like to make sure is, is on public record. We visited with Minister Mackayver, I believe it was in Red Deer, for a meeting regarding highway speeds and so on and so forth. I believe that's what it was, don't quote me on it anymore. However, or no, this was.
Code of.
Code of Conduct, my apologies. In that meeting, Mr. Mackayver stated that the only way you ever make sure that your elected official knows whether they're doing the job or not is every four years, you've got one chance to show your, your views on how that has been handled. This takes a little bit of that away and puts it in the hand of the opinion of the provincial government in charge. But making our opinions known public and get out there and ensure that your media knows as well. And let's put a little pressure on Minister Rick and ensure that he knows that maybe they're not doing exactly what the public wants, as seventy-six percent of the respondents to that poll said. And I'll make that motion.
It was the most engaging webinar I've attended so far. A lot of people attended, a lot of people had questions, concerns. It was.
Any other questions, concerns? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to send a letter to the premier that recommends that the government of Alberta rescind Bill twenty, the Municipal Affairs Statutes Amendment Act, due to the extensive concerns raised by, raised by municipal leaders across Alberta, including the town of Clarosome Council, and that the government of Alberta engage municipal governments through a collaborative and trust-based consultation process to update the local authorities' elections act and municipal government act, to assist municipal governments to effectively govern in the interests of their residents and deliver on the future needs of each community in Alberta.
Do it.
Good job.
What she said.
All in favor? Motion approved. Thank you. Number nine. Number nine. Correspondents, Alberta Municipalities Summer 2024 Municipal Leaders Caucus.
Yes, so just an invitation to the summer caucus, Alberta municipalities summer caucus. I don't think this is one that council has traditionally attended, but the dates are available and there is also a virtual offering, the one they're doing in St. Albert on June That costs for the Zoom virtual attendance is $55. I believe there's some information on, yeah, some information on what events or rather conversations they'll be having at the caucus as well.
Anyone interested? Counselor Ross? In the Zoom portion?
The Zoom, yes.
Do we need a motion for that?
I think we can just probably.
Manage it.
We can just manage it, we can just register that.
Okay. Number 10, Correspondents, National Police Force Federation. Abe?
So this is the National Police Force Federation, looking to, looking for council to support a motion at the Alberta municipalities conference in the fall. Let me just pull it up here. They're advocating basically for changes from the provincial government. They obviously have some concerns over Bill 11, which is proposing, or they're claiming it's to bring in the provincial police force. So they're concerned with that and have an advocacy piece there for council. In the past, council has supported the National Police Federation with letters of support, essentially drawing attention to your support for the RCMP in the province as opposed to having a provincial police force. Essentially, they're looking for more money to be transferred over to the existing RCMP rather than going into a new police force.
Take that for information. Number 11, Correspondents, Granum District Canada Day Society. Abe?
So Granum District Canada Day Society is looking for sponsors for their celebrations on July 1st. Looks like they are teaming up with Fort MacLeod to help them celebrate their 150th birthday. They've got a few sponsoring ship, sponsorship opportunities, Canada Day Show and Shine, First Nations Performance, Children's Entertainment, Remington Museum Carriage Museum. And an invitation to attend the parade as well.
Counselor Cutler?
Is there a cost associated with any of this? Where's the financial?
I don't know if there's an actual ask, like a specific financial ask rather than a sponsorship, primarily to support the fireworks and then the other items.
So they're just looking for any monetary contribution towards, so it's not like you can do the Remington Museum carriage and it's $500 and your name's on that? They're just looking for monetary, okay.
Comments?
Do we have one listed in our?
You do. Last year you were asked the same thing and you chose not to.
Right.
But yes, there is still, I don't know that I actually remember.
No, it's okay, that's okay. But we didn't do it last year either, right?
No. Can we do send a vote in here?
Right. Is anybody interested, want to make a motion, not interested, pass it on for information?
How much was it last year that?
She doesn't, she doesn't remember.
No.
They didn't.
We didn't do it, we didn't sponsor anything last year.
Oh, you didn't.
We just put a float in.
Oh, okay.
I'll move, we give them $500 towards the little people's entertainment.
All right. That's cool.
I just appreciate the fact that we have moved our fireworks and they have their fireworks. We have two, we work well with Granum and a lot of our community residents do attend the Granum Fair Days and, and stuff, so it, and it's very well done.
That's what I said last year.
Well, I changed my mind this year.
That's good.
We're allowed to change.
Question?
So moved by Counselor Carlson to support the Canada Day festivities by donating to the children's entertainment in the amount of $500.
All in favor? Number 12, Correspondents, Terry Fox Run. Abe?
So it looks like the Terry Fox coordinator, run organizer, who has been doing it for 20 years, is stepping down for the 2024 run. So they are looking for a group or a person who can carry on that work with the organizing of the run. And so they're asking for a little bit of promotion on the council agenda about that, that need in the community, and ask for the town's participation in maybe sharing some recruitment, volunteer recruitment pieces on social media.
Anybody want to step up and volunteer?
It sure would be nice to see one of our corporations within the community step up and maybe sponsor it under their name and help run it within one of their business
Can we help them with social media?
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Okay, we don't need a motion for that, do we?
Yeah, Megan can help him out.
Make it a motion.
Sure.
She's busy typing, so.
I already have one.
Oh, perfect. Who's going to make the motion?
I will.
Counselor Meister?
I assumed you'd go a different direction than that, but.
I have moved by Counselor Meister to direct administration to reach out to local charity groups to see if anyone is interested in sponsoring the Terry Fox Run going forward. And I can put at the end, and to promote the need of a coordinator on social media. Are you?
Perfect. Is that good?
Sure, it's good. Took the words right out of my mouth.
All in favor? Correspondents, Willow Creek Composite High School, 2024 graduation. Abe?
So the graduating class is inviting the mayor and plus one, your spouse, to attend the graduation ceremonies on June the 1st. They are also requesting that you bring some greetings from the town of Clarosone at the cap and gown ceremony. Time there is 2:00 PM.
We can do that.
You'll be there.
Who's, who's going to be attending then? We kind of need to know. You'll be going?
Thank you.
Request for decision, Safety Code Services Agreement. Abe?
Yeah, so we are nearing the end of our agreement with Superior Safety. They oversee our inspection services for the building, electrical, plumbing, and gas disciplines under the Safety Codes Act. So we are nearing the end of that agreement and we're just, we have the opportunity to renew it. We've had that agreement in place for three years now. We have the ability to renew for another three years, another term. Administratively, we are happy with Superior Safety and the agreement that we have in place, and so we would be happy to extend that, or exercise that renewal, rather. However, there is an opportunity for council if desired to put it out for a request for proposals to see what is out there. Now would be the time to, what other services or service companies out there would be able to provide that, so now would be the time to direct us to do that.
How many years have we gone on the renewal? I know we did the renewal last time. I'm just wondering if at any point in time, doing an RFP is of value to, to administration as far as, as cost or, or services?
So there was, there was an RFP last time.
That was?
Yeah.
I couldn't remember if we did or not.
Yeah, we received three proposals and they were selected.
Yeah, sounds good. If everybody's okay with that, I'd move to renew them.
Questions, concerns? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to extend the Safety Code Services Agreement for an additional three-year term with Superior Safety Codes, Inc.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, Water Response Shortage Response Plan. Abe?
So we are looking for an update to the Water Shortage Response Plan. There were some clarifications that we're looking for, so maybe I'll just review, review those changes or clarifications that we're looking to make here with you. So the residential and commercial restrictions guides, we're combining those into one table to make it easier to read and to use. Consistent stages and activities throughout, and then creates a community routine. I've made all descriptions of activities consistent, so on the previous restrictions guide, there was different wording. They were trying to say the same thing, but there was some different wording. So we've actually made those activities consistent, lawn and aesthetic garden changed to lawn, garden, and plants. Combined all like information in tables, so we've merged cells, some cells where there's duplicate information from one, one cell to the next. It makes the table less busy to read. Normal stage standardized wording, no restrictions, but we are recommending as a conservation effort, when we're in normal stages, that people water during certain times. Just an information piece more than anything, there's nothing really to enforce there because there are no restrictions. Stage five standardized, wind pumping may have to occur. Town water use is prohibited pending approval. So basically, it currently says that town water use is prohibited completely, but there, we recognize that there may be some businesses in town that may still need to use water to actually run their business, and so that would create a process whereby businesses would contact us and get approval, so. We are proposing to take away watering on the weekends in stage three for residents and commercial users. The purpose of that is we, when we ran into stage three last year, the water quality at that point was quite poor and it was very hard on the processes, and so staff had to get called in to kickstart the system. I don't know the technical terms, but anyways, deal with some problems and issues that were created by the poor water quality. So we're not eliminating the watering in that stage completely, but we are asking for operational reasons that we eliminate on the weekends when we don't have staff That covers the gist of it. Any questions from council?
Counselor Cutler?
Over the last year, having these water conversations with a lot of communities around us and beyond Alberta, there's, there's a lot of communities that have gone to odd and even watering days and just stuck with it permanently, and, and odd days on Tuesday, Thursday, and even days on Monday, Wednesday. And I honestly don't see a, I don't know why we can't do that. I don't understand why we can't have structured watering plans on a permanent basis. It's not going anywhere. It's, it's, it's going to be a problem for a while to go. I just, when we start doing this stage one, three, normal stage, no restrictions, we recommend, we do, I talked to a couple of communities and, and of course, with any change, there's a little buck in the system when we get going, but I don't see why we can't do something. I'm interested in doing something like that.
Can we make that recommendation?
You can. We, we can definitely, we can definitely look into that. That's simplicity, and I think there's some, definitely some benefit to that. We probably just have to prepare a decision for council to implement that and what that would look like or get it in writing.
Yeah, I, I mean, having a conversation with a couple of these communities, I mean, I just, we all talk about water and we talk about, you know, future and this kind of, I mean, if we can just solidify something and make it simple, I mean, I am interested in what everybody else thinks. I don't know. To me, it just seems like it's an easier format of having a concrete plan of, you know, what, we have water problems and why wait till we get to the city muddy water before we start putting restrictions in? I don't know. I watered my grass four times last year. I just don't understand why we can't find a happy, we didn't even just say, hey, evens and odds, but that's just my opinion.
With hours of restriction or just all day long?
How do I say this, please? We all know I am not a water guy. I'm a nurse and I know water absorbs and evaporates, and I know water in during the hottest part of the days isn't, so I would recommend having a timeframe in there because, I mean, it's just, I don't know, but yes, I would recommend that.
Thank you.
I can't believe I'm going to say it, but I, I agree again with Counselor Cutler twice, twice in, in a meeting. I can fully respect that. I don't know if we need to go straight to full wording of, of restrictions to, but recommendations of, and push the information, but yeah, it definitely, there's a lot of communities that don't have the capacity to process the volumes of waters needed on those spikes. I greatly appreciate the not on the weekends because everybody opens their tap and you can, you can watch the, the water pressure drop as the day goes on. But yeah, however, we, I think it needs to come back for wording, but I generally agree with Counselor Cutler.
So we do, the MD is connected with this Water Shortage Response Plan and the water restrictions with their, they have some users out west, and they also have, I believe Granum will follow the same restrictions guide, so I think that we should probably have that conversation about future changes and simplifying the tables with the MD. and simplifying the tables with the M.D. Before we go ahead and do that. But, we would need to engage them and then possibly bring something back to council for consideration. How quickly do you, when do you want this?
Summer's just around the corner, so whenever it's possible. I mean, we've got restrictions on, we've got formalities in place already. I just, to me, I just think a simplicity process around, we need to water four days, five days, six days a week. We can have certain structured processes is my thinking.
Councilor Kettles?
In my mind, I'm seeing two different conversations there. I think we need a standard that is agreed upon with all of our neighbors and so on. And I think that could be a Clare's Home thing that we do and we layer over top of this. And I appreciate, you know, clarity and so on, stage fives. I have no idea even what stage we're at right now. So, that's a fair comment. But, I would think that we would, it would be beneficial to have this as a standardized thing with our partners and so on, and this is the baseline. And then, if we want to choose to do a Clare's Home solution of something in addition to that, we could layer it over top of this. But, to me, I see this just as a foundational thing, just to align all of our stages. And I do appreciate administration going through the efforts and cleaning up all the wording from, you know, there were probably many hands building this over the years, right? So, I do appreciate that effort. But, anyway, that's how I kind of see that we could maybe just layer something additional on top of it. But, I don't know.
Councilor Cutler?
So, when you say to layer it on top of it, like, to me, watering your lawn should be just structured. That's what I'm suggesting is Monday, Wednesday for odds and Tuesday, Thursday for evenings. Right? But, exactly, is that what you're talking, which is that layered into the other restriction pieces?
It's, yeah.
Yeah.
This is a foundation.
Yes, yeah, no, I agree.
Then, whatever council wants to do in addition to that.
Right, okay, no, that makes sense.
I just see this as a foundation document as well.
Right. But, I do believe that we need to have those conversations because I believe Granum and other users of our water facility that we supply should be in tow.
So, wouldn't that have to be added on to this one that you documented? You're saying that we're going to implement other?
Yeah, you know, it becomes kind of difficult to layer something new on top of this. This is already connected or attached to our water and sewer utility bylaw. So, the restrictions can be enforced. So, there's some, probably some challenges to that. What I would recommend we do this evening is actually update the existing Water Shortage Response Plan and then get a motion from council to investigate this further, connect with the M.D. about possibly creating a simpler, a simpler water restrictions guide and sound alike, possibly just having it in perpetuity as well, if I'm following the conversation.
Right.
And then, we can explore the layering piece and actually have a full conversation about that.
So, I'd motion for this one, you know, to, but also the talk for what you're talking about to get added, addition.
So, we want a motion to do this one? And then add?
Add the...
When, I just wanted to ask you...
Councilor Zimmer?
When you said putting residential and commercial restrictions on the same tables, that mean you're just putting it on the same sheet or they just got to follow the same rules?
So, it will be on the, yeah, it's aligned, they're aligned really closely under the new one. There it is right there, water restrictions. So, they will be on the same sheet and under the same rules.
So, you just got to watch that hinder that if you're residential only runs Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Keith can still have water on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Nah.
We'll give him a deal for Wednesdays.
Water usage, water usage.
No, 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 I'm talking about water. I'm talking about the extra watering.
The schedule, a schedule.
Your water usage, this is just restricting your water privileges.
Or simply could Clare's Home just not do a lawn watering bylaw that states X.
We'll figure that out later.
Send it for direction to admin and they can come back and tell us how to be smart and...
There you go, yeah.
Okay. Carry on?
Well, I'll motion this then.
I'm concerned about that because now, if we approve this, then you come back later and say, okay...
But, what he's talking about has nothing to do with restrictions. It's all the time, every day. If there's no restrictions, we are responsible for watering our grass.
You didn't tell me it was odd and even.
We'll have to do something on social media and utility bills.
I get it.
Yeah, I get it. We'll pass this one. We can pass this one.
Okay.
Okay.
Who's going to make that motion? Councilor Ross? Question?
Moved by Councilor Ross to approve the Town of Clare's Home slash M.D. of Bulla Creek Water Shortage Response Plan Restriction Guide Updates As Presented.
All in favor? Approved. Next. Request for decision.
I want to make a motion to administration to follow up on, looking at possible other ways of shutting up the water.
You finesse how you want this to be because I'm trying to finesse it.
I want to hear this.
So, I have moved by Councilor Cutler to direct administration to further investigate options regarding having perpetual set watering schedules for odd and even properties.
She's good.
Fantastic.
Does that work?
Fantastic. I just want to look at it. I just want to, there's so many other communities that do it and I just don't understand why we have to, I don't know.
I think it comes down to processing capacity.
Yeah. But, just because we can process it doesn't mean we should.
So, we have the question?
Moved by Councilor Cutler to direct administration to further investigate options regarding having perpetual set watering schedules for odd and even properties.
All in favor? Approved. Number sixteen, request for decision, Public Participation Plan Recreation Facilities. Abe?
So, at the April eighth council meeting, council direct administration to prepare a public participation plan for engaging the public on implementing or potentially implementing a new capital reserve fund for the towns recreation and cultural buildings. We do have a policy in place, a public participation policy that outlines public participation plans. Councils have some statements about council's desire to engage and have public participation and the way to go about proceeding with engaging the public. Essentially, administration prepares a bit of a strategy and requests, just gets approval from council and then carries that out. So, what we've suggested here is to have a survey on the issue just to gauge the public's interest in the reserve and to gauge their appetite for tax increases to support the reserve. We're suggesting that council can kind of, we can maybe promote the June coffee with councils as an opportunity for the public to discuss this with council. We can provide some information on the issue that we're having and council can discuss that at the coffee with council. Of course, you can talk about anything, but we'll promote the June coffee with councils as an opportunity to discuss that matter. We'll have a mailout in the end of June or beginning of July, a utility mailout with information on the issue and a link to a public survey. We'll promote that on social media and in the local press. And then, gather, gather information from the public through the survey on the issue and its possible solutions. Again, on the public's appetite for the creation of that capital reserve fund and their appetite for tax increases. And we're suggesting on reporting the findings of that survey in August, at the August council meeting.
Questions, concerns, discussion?
One little discussion. Survey is on, would you like your taxes increased? Usually, we have a foregone conclusion on that anyways, but it is public participation. Part of this is going to be that public engagement so people understand what the costs of those replacements look like, why we are fundraising beforehand in order to ensure that they have those facilities. And I'll pick on Rick one more time. Minister MacGyver has facilitated a fair degree of cost downloading onto municipalities, which in, in all essence has been a provincial tax increase. They keep the same amount of tax and then ask the communities to double up downstream. So, yes, we've got the potential to give a, be as transparent as possible, putting a separate line item on a tax bill for facilities like this. Or, we look at our community and say, you've got a one-time perpetual tax increase of 10% per year to ensure that you've got facilities for your community in the future. Either way, people have to understand where that money is going and what their desire is 10, 15 years down the road. Nobody likes it, nobody wants to talk about it. But, the numbers are the numbers. And I, I struggle trying to sell that to the public at this point in time, even though I understand it may be a necessary evil.
Councilor Kettles?
I largely agree with Councilor Carlson has said. I think the effort to be transparent and have public engagement, I think, could be worthwhile. I concurrent and fully prepared to understand that we, the community may not have an appetite for this at this point. And, you know, if we have a survey and the results are results, I think we're fairly bound to follow that for a period of time. And the reality of that, then, the issue exists and it gets bumped down to the next council because at some point, somebody's going to have to deal with this shortfall. But, I think this is the process. I think we begin the conversation and people will have their opinions and we'll see where it falls, in my opinion.
Any other discussion? Diana?
There's been a few that have said about taxes, the raising of taxes. Once I share with them about the buildings, we've got to keep them upgraded. We want to have nice buildings or, and that, and once I share that, they seem to, okay, I can understand now the process, so...
I have a comment. If we do a survey and we do public engagement and a large percentage of them say no, are we prepared to follow through with that?
Yes. I agree. I mean, if we ask the question and they give us the answer and we can't proceed based on that, then like my comment before was then it becomes an issue for the next council. But, somebody's going to have to deal with it sometime.
Councilor Cutler?
I disagree. We are information seeking. This is no way, this is getting my thought path, like I'm gaining the information from my people. But, I'm also looking at it as an infrastructure process. They want to be, we want our constituents to be participatory with their opinions. They're allowed that. That doesn't mean that it's a yes or no because 54% come back and say, I don't want the tax. The tax is there for the buildings. We want their information, how they think we could do things differently and look at many different options that we might be able to add into our decision making. But, this to me is an information process that is no way, we're not asking, it's not a... referendum, yes or no question. It's an information process to me.
That's good.
Apparently, the province's 70-s somewhat percent is not enough not to change your opinion either. So, you're exactly right, Mike.
I can...
Councilor Zimmer?
Oh, that's pretty much what I was going to say. Is that you just got to be prepared that if you do get a whole bunch of the ones, it's like Councilor Cutler said, it's for information. We're not asking for permission how it's going to go. I mean, you can't sit there and sewer your town. You have to be responsible for the forward. It's our responsibility to make sure services are there in the future. If this is what it takes, it's what it takes.
I agree.
Ideally, we never want to be the smartest people in any room. So, hopefully, somebody that does have a good idea wants to participate and can help lead a discussion.
Okay. We need a motion for that? Councilor Cutler? Question?
Moved by Councilor Cutler to approve the Public Participation Plan for Potential Recreation and Cultural Facilities Capital Reserve for the Town of Clare's Home as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Okay, next, Public Participation Plan Communications and Public Engagement Strategy. Yikes. Abe?
So, another Public Participation Plan for your approval, council. Just in accordance with council strategic plan, there is a strategic priority of developing an engagement and communications strategy. And so, administration has been working on an assessment of existing practices, existing engagement and communication practices, policies, bylaws, processes, et cetera. But, in order to fully inform the overall strategy, we do need to engage staff. We need to engage council and we need to engage public on what we're doing well, what we need to do better, what messages aren't getting out there, even what methods people use to be engaged or connected with the town. We need more information to really advise council on an overall communications and engagement strategy. So, we are suggesting that we do that. We have focus sessions with town staff and town council, conversations, basically, just gathering input and feedback on some specific questions and then a, and then a survey as well. Details on the survey, Karine?
Well, we're just thinking, we want to keep it kind of simple. I mean, people get asked a lot of questions a lot of the time and another survey, they might just be, I don't know. But, I mean, if we have it out there, we have it online. We also, we're thinking we would have some printed copies, like just one page, at the library, at the Aquatic Center, at FCSS, places like that where people can actually fill out a paper copy. I mean, I don't know how much response we're going to get, but we're just, we just kind of need to know if people feel like ultimately, are we doing enough? Is the town news, Facebook, is that, you know, are we getting the information out there to residents? And I, I just feel like, I think we're doing a good job. I feel like we advertise and try to get information out to public as much as we can in different ways. But, I mean, I'd really like to hear if there's some issues out there. People think there's some holes where we could fill them, then let's, let's get that information and go on with that. We were thinking we want to keep it open till the end of June. I think once again into summertime, it's no point. But, if we could get something going sometime, hopefully this month, and then leave it open till the end of June, we'll hopefully get enough responses that will warrant that we've actually done something.
Councilor Cutler?
I, I don't know if I just missed it, but are we putting it into the water, our utility bills?
We could do that too.
Right. So, because that's one of the things I, I'm not on media, I'm not, I don't get the paper. I don't go down to FCSS, I don't. So, to alleviate anybody coming to say to me that, you know, I didn't get my water bill or my utility bill, it's another option.
Utility bills actually just went out and they won't go out until the end of June.
End of June? That's what I was wondering.
So, that's the thing, like we've kind of missed the boat on that. I don't know.
That's okay. That was just an option. It was just, I was just wondering if that was an option.
Or, we could also use that connect system. We could send it out...
We could send it out through our connect system, all the emails that we have on file.
Yep.
And ask people for that, too, I think.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, I couldn't remember the cycle of the utility bills.
Yeah, well, every two months, so they've already gone out.
If council wants to do a couple of concurrent surveys, we could potentially put notice out for the survey in the June utility bill along with the other one that we're trying to do and really get people engaged doing two surveys over a month. We could have potentially promote both those if you want to get it in the, this one in the utility bills for the end of June.
So maybe we leave it open until the end of July even. Like, it's not really like, I think we just want to get this information out there, but I don't think we feel like it's, it has to be expedient, has to be super fast.
No.
So, we could, we could open it like sometime even the first of June and leave it open until the end of July, too.
Right, and then you can stick them into the water bills.
I mean, just, you hear it all the time. I don't read the paper, I don't go down to FCSS, I don't, if you want to participate, you have to find a way. But if we can at least say, hey, we put it in utility, and not everybody gets a utility bill, some go to the landlord, some, I get that, but at least we can say we did our part by putting it into that avenue, right?
At the front desk.
Yep.
At FCS, at the library.
Still put them there.
Yep.
But I mean, just another way to mitigate the whole.
Social center.
Well, that's a good one.
I think this is important information to have because it's going to talk into bigger conversations that this or next council has regarding webpage branding, a whole bunch of stuff that this feeds into, right? So.
Well, and we seem to have this conversation, it seems like. So, when I came on, we redid the website about 2008. And then we redid the website again and did a rebranding, whole thing, 2016. And so, I guess it's just kind of time to do another look at it.
Keep going.
Covered lights?
Covered lights, yeah.
Okay. So, we're in agreement. Who would like to make a motion? Counselor Ross, question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to approve the public participation plan for the communications and engagement strategy as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision? Skate park additional funding. Abe?
So, we have, as you can see, the preparations for the new skate park have begun. However, once we started doing those preparations and doing some excavation, there's obviously some concerns and issues with building a skate park on this property here. The soil is just not suitable and it's very saturated throughout, particularly throughout the spring and throughout portions of the year. And so, there's some significant concern about issues long-term with that skate park thing shifting and not being usable. So, we did have a geotechnical evaluation on site and the recommendation was to excavate the entire project to a depth of 1.1 meters and construct a new base of pit run and geotextile cloth. Town had, the town had previously pledged some in-kind funding for a lot of the base work. But this new base work is really outside of our scope. We don't have the ability to do that. So, that means, sorry, we did get a quote for the pit run and the cloth, which would make the park on a, place the park on a much more suitable foundation, right? And so, the quote is $112,500. So, we do need some extra funding. There is an option to do a little bit of work now with the existing funds that have been allocated and have the skate park come back after there has been some fundraising done to complete the park. Administration is not recommending we do that. There is also an option to cancel the project. We're also not recommending that we do that either. We had previously had $100,000 in the capital budget for that project. We did change, that was coming out of the, we did change to about $50,000 with the $50,000 in kind as well. So, previously, there was almost enough in the capital budget. That was through the local government fiscal framework. We are recommending that we approve, that council approve the out-of-budget expense to fund for this extra base work that we weren't anticipating. It would be, again, $112,500. And really, we are trying to recognize the great work, the fundraising work and the grant success that the skate park group has. We're still getting a project for about 50 cent or less than 50 cent dollars to the town. Well, actually, yeah, significantly less than 50 cent dollars to the town. So, we still feel there's tremendous value in proceeding with this. Although it will be costing, if council does approve it, it will cost more than we were anticipating from our local government fiscal framework funding.
Discussion? Concerns? Counselors Zimmer?
I'd like to, which part of the digging to the depth of 1.1 meters, filling it full of rock and laying cloth can't we do? Like, I don't get why that's something our staff can't do.
Yeah. Well, first off, the actual materials, we don't have, right?
Right.
We don't have those materials. And in terms of capabilities, I don't know. I think we probably want an excavating company or construction company in here overseeing that work. I know operations has said that it's out of their scope, so.
Counselor Kettles?
I guess I would have two comments, one because of what Counselor Zimmer said. I'm a little incredulous that there's nothing that we can do on this project that would be able to, be able to be some in-kind kind of thing. Whether, you know, maybe we're not laying cloth, you know, maybe we can't dig that deep, but there must be something. But I also understand that I'm sure, you know, administration has engaged with operations and had that discussion intently. So, I guess I'd have to defer to that. The other piece that I would comment on is that obviously, we did geotechnical on this to begin with and now we've gone another round of geotechnical. We've all seen the Great Lakes Clar's Home swamp in that corner down there. How confident are we that even this is going to work?
So, I spoke with operations and they felt like with the geotechnical, the second geotechnical review and the recommendations, that it felt confident moving forward with that. It definitely wasn't, definitely wasn't, there was definitely a lot of concern before we got that. It was actually us that pushed, it was the skate company that got the geotechnical and because we were pushing for it, but feel comfortable moving forward with that.
New line said they've seen worse.
Well, clearly, I guess.
Counselor Cutler?
And we didn't see this with the first one? We all know it's wet. So, we picked that spot anyhow. We didn't, like, I don't know.
If you remember, or you maybe you.
I was just coming on, I think, in those types of things when they first.
We had this discussion way back when.
I know, Martha Clark, we had, I know, we had this discussion, we decided on it. So, I don't want to sound.
But we're here.
I love the Closest Skate Park Society and all the work they've done, all the volunteers and everybody that's gone into hard work for this great plan. I agree, we can't see a fault at the wayside. But my memory, $112,500 out of our LGFF is a significant blow to, am I correct in saying road repairs? Is that what comes out of the LGFF? Am I saying infrastructure processes? Is that what comes out of the LGFF?
Half-price sidewalks?
This is a tough one. This is one that really tugs at your heartstrings because this has been a long process, but.
It almost makes you want to see a Moffett Park behind the town office and a skate park someplace else, doesn't it?
So, it's really only, it's really only an additional 60, right? Like, you can't look at it as the 112 because, I mean, even though we were saying 51.5 in kind, it's still costing us the 51, right? It's not like if it's free, right? So, even though the number's scary like that, it's not an additional 112 out of our pockets, it's just an additional 61.
Well, it is cash money, though.
Yeah, but it is just an additional 61. Because the first 51.5 really isn't free.
It's that 10% tax increase that we were talking about for next year. But, yeah, it's hard when you've got a hole behind your building and a start. And I think it, I think it becomes the realization that we've got something deferred in our five-year because of it. But, yeah, that eliminates one fleet vehicle replacement for the next two years.
No air conditioning in those trucks.
I'd say it costs more to put a roll-down window in one now than it does to run electric. But if we, if we do go ahead with this, it is a serious budget line and we've got some expectations in 2025 as well. Because it does, it, this one's a kick in the pants on that.
Counselors Zimmer?
I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to cause arguments or too late, you know? Or doubt what people are saying. Like, what part of this job can't we do? Like, I know, I know they said it's out of our scope, but I mean, we have qualified guys that can dig eight, 10 feet deep around water surfaces to fix stuff. I'm pretty sure they can dig a three-foot hole from one end to the other.
Yeah, and there's also the, there is also the materials, right? The pit run and the geotechnical cloth as well, so.
Our equipment's not big enough.
I'm pretty sure our loader, our front-end loader can push rock into a hole.
Yes. Our backhoe almost flipped over when we were doing this. We had the hole, the bucket in the hole holding up the backhoe because the backhoe can't reach like this and can't.
And Brad says we like him sitting there. I like it.
Counselor Cutler?
Again, I don't know the details and I have to rely on the fact that our maintenance or.
Operations.
Operations people know what they can and cannot do. And again, is this company going to come in and do half the job? Are we going to end up paying three-quarters of the price for half a job if they only have to come in and lay? You know, I don't know what those numbers are, right? So, I think we're just going to have to move on, carry on. It's for the kids. Counselors Zimmer?
It's why we have reserves.
Yes.
And Counselors Zimmer, we, this quote came from an excavating company. We haven't had a chance to look into, this all came through the last couple of days last week. So, we haven't had a chance to look into what the town might be able to do in this increased scope. I just know that operations said it's beyond their scope, right? So. I'd be willing to move with the up-to-value.
Thank you.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to approve the out-of-budget expenditure up to $112,500 for the completion of the skate park to be paid out of the LGFF capital grant funds.
All in favor? Opposed? Approved. Okay. Request for decision? Clar's Home Taxi Token Program. Abe?
So, on April 8th, request for direction was presented to council regarding the taxi token program and the increasing costs of taxi rides and transportation. Council referred that item to administrative services committee to review the existing policy and bring forward recommendations and the committee met on May 7th and recommended that policy 5.5, 5.0 be updated to increase the monthly allotment of tokens from 16 to 14. We felt like this was the easiest approach and it would increase the allotment consistent with the increase in the fares, which is a 50% increase in fares in town, so. We talked a little bit about the service and its use last time. It is a popular increasing service in town for seniors and those who qualify for government assistance. And so, we are recommending that council approve the updated policy again, which is simply just increasing from 16 to 24 tokens a month per user.
Questions, discussion? Counselor Kettles?
Do we have an actual number of what this change is going to cost to the town of Clar's Home?
Yeah, it'll cost about.
Ballpark.
4,600. Sorry, it'll cost an extra $1,500, a little under that, actually, $1,200.
Oh, that's fine. I just, I just need that number. I mean, you know, this serves a, I'll call it a small but growing population in our town and to those, to the folks that need this, this is incredibly important. So, I'm completely comfortable with that.
Willing to make that motion?
Willing to make that motion.
Counselor Kettles?
Kyle?
We should have.
Sure, sure. Yep.
I was just saying, we want to have an effective date on this because we have the public coming in all the time asking when council was going to make this decision. So, I'm just adding an effective date to this. So, moved by Counselor Kettles to update policy number 5.5.50, the town of Clar's Home's taxi token program policy as presented, effective May 14th, 2024.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision? 2024 parade attendance? Abe?
So, usually, we get a motion from council to send the town float to different parades throughout the region. We haven't received any requests for attendance at parades this year. Usually, we get a few kind of trickle-through and some kind of different ones. And council usually has some decisions to make, but we're proposing just the same parade float within the region. In the past, for example, we've gone to Blairmore and sometimes other communities have, you know, 100-year, 150-year, and so council will choose to send out, maybe Vulcan County or Vulcan. In the past, we've done as well, so. But what we're proposing is July 1st in Granum, August 5th for Nanton Roundup Days, obviously, August 10th for the Clar's Home Fair Days, August 17th for the Pincher Creek Rodeo Parade, and November 30th for the Fort McLeod Santa Claus Parade. Council does budget $1,500 every year for candy for these parades. Council does budget $1,500 every year for candy for these parades. And so if we get this schedule solidified, we can go ahead and buy some candy.
Questions, discussion? Motion? Counselor Ross? Question?
Move by Counselor Ross to accept the 2024 parade schedule as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, barbecue smoker competition, Amundson Park. Abe?
No, thanks.
Mayor, I'm going to have to excuse myself.
Excuse yourself. No.
Okay, so the Claire's Home local press would like to host a barbecue smoker competition on Saturday, August 17th and Sunday, August 18th at Amundson Park. Policy, we do have a policy in place that directs administration to work with nonprofits and charity groups to rent out, sorry, not rent out, but to utilize town facilities, town parks for charity events, nonprofit events. And so administratively, we have the ability to do that. However, when it is a for-profit group, that is, the local press is a, is a local business looking to use park space, it has to come to council for approval. So. Some details on the event as they do plan, the local press does plan to charge a small entry fee to competition participants and will pay out all fees in prize money or awards. If they make any money from any of the added-on community activities, it will go to charity. For example, the local press's Christmas hamper fund and other local charities. So they're not intending to make any money off of this. They want to put the money back into the community, any, any funding that they generate from entry fees. So they are looking for use of Amundson Park, access to the power and the washroom facilities for those dates, August 17th and 18th.
Could I have a motion, please?
Can we have discussion?
No. Counselor Kettles?
Are we going to have the power bumped up by then?
We are getting those changes right now, so they'll be, they'll be in place by then. And we also talked to electricians about smokers aren't actually, they don't actually use a lot of power. It's the crock pots that actually use a lot of power. I think it was a, was it Chili Cook-Off? That's what popped them last year. So we're updating because, because of the Chili Cook-Off and the smoker shouldn't present too much of an issue, but we are updating anyways, so.
Counselor Kettler?
I would just like to put my two cents in. We're not updating for crock pots, we're not updating for smokers. We're updating for the opportunity for the community to provide local theater or local musicians or local other programs, not for cooking food and having little festivals. It's for the use of the park for the community as a whole for many different reasons. I do not want to answer questions of why we're upgrading electrical for crock pots. I have already and I don't want to do it anymore. So it's for the facility use around many different uses.
And from a semi-professional point of view, I would like to make a suggestion to the group that they do not allow my first smokers, AKA electrical pellet machines, to actually participate in their smoking competition. And, and, and that way we eliminate the, the use for electricity in general.
I think we should leave that to the organizers of the facility and the program because I think a lot of us need that electrical.
Are we going to have a fire truck on standby? Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Kettler? Question?
Move by Counselor Kettler to allow the Claire's Home local press to use Amundson Park on August 17th and 18th, 2024 to host a barbecue smoker competition and to allow them to access both power and washroom facilities.
All in favor? Approved. Leave him out there. Okay, next, income statement by function, financial report, Abe?
Yep, updated financial report for April 30th, year-to-date revenues and expenses. We do have some notes for you on some of the items that appear to be a little bit out of sync with the time of year, I guess. For example, bylaw enforcement. That's at 72% of the year for revenues. We're not that far through the year, but a lot of that is dog licensing, which gets done early in the year.
Questions, concerns, discussion? Could I have a motion to accept the financial plan per statement? Counselor Carlson? Question?
Move by Counselor Carlson to accept the consolidated statement of operations for the month ended April 30th, 2024 as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Information brief, Town of Claire's Home Quality Management Plan. Abe?
So if council recalls, we did bring you a conversation about updating the quality management plan back in February. And we just wanted to report that the Safety Codes Council has accepted that update. If you recall, the, one of the big changes, which was minor, but the main change was to update the, the structure of, that was laid out, the organizational structure that was laid out. We had people's names in there before, as opposed to positions. Having positions in there makes your plan relevant when those people leave, right? And so that was the main update to the quality management plan. And just wanted to report that that's been accepted.
Thank you. What's next?
We have request management system.
Okay, Abe?
So. So this was, this request management system was approved with the 2024 budget. And so the town has gone through the orientation and onboarding of the request management system, and it is now live. So it is on the website and can be accessed. We've got a QR code, you can access via QR code. It's also got its own separate website that you can access directly as well. The system allows for both internal from departments and staff or external from public requests to be submitted online and then automatically routed or manually assigned to the appropriate individual or department to address the service request. Could be anything from internally from an office staff member submitting a water shut-off request to Public Works due to a bill non-payment to a resident complaint of pothole or hydrant leak or, yeah, tree fall over or something. So the system is, it helps ensure that the requests actually get to the right people. It allows the public to take care of requests and concerns without directly connecting with administration. And it allows them to get a report back on the, an automated report back on the requests or service requests that they've made. So a number of different features, encourage you to get on there and play around with it. The platform also has a location where we can post information. We've already posted some information on there about tax, explanation of taxes and, and tax rates and tax increases. There's, what else do we have on there right now? Putting in a delegation to council, there's information on that. Lots of information comes up, too, when you're trying to make a request. There's links to the CAB bylaw if you're making a request about that. So there's some very useful tools at getting information to people, proactively, potentially proactively answering questions and concerns and dealing with issues. So just wanted to report to council about that, that it's out there. So encourage residents to, to use it.
Thank you. Next, information brief, stay-in-play tourism incentive. Abe?
Yeah, so the Economic Development Department is announcing a stay-in-play tourism incentive that starts May long weekend, May 24th, and extending through Victoria Day weekend, September 4th. Yeah, Labor Day, sorry. That is Labor Day. Okay. So there's three, three main approaches to encouraging tourism that we're seeking through this stay-in-play incentive. Personalized engagement, tourists checking into the campground or visiting the museum will receive specially crafted postcards featuring Claire's Home highlights. The postcards showcase the town's attractions and provide convenient QR code leading to upcoming Claire's Home Town Tourism Website, sorry, where visitors can access exclusive discounts from local businesses, coupons ranging from 10% off at a fashion store to complimentary passes for fitness centers, buy-one-get-one features with food, free gift with purchases, et cetera. So there's also a strategic marketing initiative here, wrapping up the social media presence to position Claire's Home as a must-visit destination. So we'll be teaming up with our local media contractor, producing compelling short commercials and content highlighting the charm of our town. Having testimonials and from different residents and businesses. And looking to leverage Google traction and targeted ads. We aim to amplify, amplify the reach and draw attention to Claire's Home's unique offerings. And finally, there's a collaborative, there's a collaborative intention with this initiative as well. And so we're looking at drawing attention to community events through advertising, collaborative advertising with other communities in the region. So Fort McLeod, Granum, potentially Staveley, pooling resources, promoting mutual or events throughout the summer and trying to get some cross-traffic there. A bit of advertising going out in the Explore magazine as well. And so we'll draw attention to this stay-in-play discounts through the Explore magazine, which is a widely distributed tourism guide for Southern Alberta. So we just wanted to let council know about those exciting initiative there.
Perfect. Take it for information. Next, council committee report. Thank you, Counselor Meister.
Thank you, Counselor Meister.
Thank you, Counselor Meister.
Don't need to be they, thanks.
Anything anybody want to add?
You guys all know what I'm doing. What are you guys doing?
Council resolution status. Abe?
Any questions on past resolutions?
Any other questions, concerns on information items? Could I have a motion to accept the information items? Counselor Ross? Question?
Move by Counselor Ross to adopt the information items as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to go in camera.
I'll make that motion to go in camera.
Counselor Zimmer? Question?
Move by Counselor Zimmer to go in camera at 9:05 PM for the following items, A, economic interests of the public body, section 25; B, business interests of a third party, section 16; land, section 24; and D, personnel, section 24.
All in favor? Approved. Camera off, please. Could I have a motion to come out of in-camera, please? Out of in-camera. Counselor Ross? Question?
Move by Counselor Ross to come out of in-camera at 9:15 PM.
All in favor? Approved. We have a couple motions.
I'll make the first motion to direct administration to proceed with developing eight residential lots in Pine Place.
Question?
Move by Counselor Meister to direct administration to proceed with developing eight residential lots in Pine Place.
All in favor? Approved. Counselor Kettler?
I'll make a motion to extend closing date to May 31st, 2024 on the condition that full interest is paid per section 10 of the purchase contract.
Question?
Move by Counselor Kettler to extend the closing date to May 31st, 2024 on the condition that all of the interest as per section 10 of the purchase contract is obtained.
All in favor? Approved. Counselor Carlson? Question?
Move by Counselor Carlson at the meeting adjourned at 9:52 PM.
All in favor? Approved. We're adjourned.